Good evening, Rockland, and welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, December 10th, 2018. First on tonight's agenda is the acceptance of the meeting minutes of November 26th, 2018.
Motion to accept.
Hi, second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, it's a vote, thank you. Seeing nothing under communications. We do have an audience. We've got a houseful of smiling faces out there. We've got the RHS AP Scholars, and we're really happy to have them with us tonight.
Absolutely.
Dr. Cron.
Can you invite Dr. Harrison to the podium to introduce them?
Hello, Dr. Harrison.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight to present to the AP Scholars. I want to first commend our student body and faculty at Rockland High School and throughout the whole entire district because 2018 was a great year for our Advanced Placement students. Advanced Placement courses are offered at Rockland High School where students have the opportunity to earn college credit while still at high school. We had our highest passing rate of 47 percent this past year, which translated to 96 students receiving a passing score of a three, four, or five. This past year in particular, we had six students who were AP Scholars, six students who were AP Scholars with honor, and six students who were AP Scholars with distinction. And these are designations from the College Board. Fourteen of the eighteen total AP Scholars were seniors that have now graduated, so they're not here with us tonight, but four of the scholars are here with us who are now seniors, who were juniors last year. Being a junior and getting this recognition is just, it's amazing, so it's remarkable. So I'm glad you invited them here tonight so that we can recognize them. Just to do a brief summary, to get these distinctions, to be an AP Scholar, you need to get an average of a three or higher on at least three full-year AP exams. To be an AP Scholar with honor, you need a three or higher on at least four full-year AP exams and have an average of a 3.25 or more. So you get a one through five scoring on the Advanced Placement assessment. The AP Scholar with distinction awards are given to students with a three or higher on at least five full-year AP exams averaging 3.5 or more. So that's just, all of those are absolutely remarkable. Each of these students gets a plaque, or has their nameplate, sorry, on a plaque outside of the auditorium. So it's almost like we're starting to try to build this academic Hall of Fame, and each of these students has a nameplate with their respective designation. So without further ado, I'd like to present these students with a certificate on behalf of the school committee and the administration and the whole entire faculty. So we'll start with Declan Rogers, who is going to be recognized for being an AP Scholar. So Declan, can you come up here? Second, we have Caitlin Cameron, who's also being recognized as an AP Scholar.
Do you want photos?
You should probably get photos.
Maybe we'll do one at the end with all of us.
Get these moments back.
Now we have an AP Scholar with honor. We have Michelle Ramoska. And lastly, and John, I'm going to have you stay up here because I have another recognition for you, but John Eller III, who's an AP Scholar with distinction. And just to kind of brag a little bit more about John, this past year, this past April, we found out that Rockland High School had one student, John was a junior at the time, who qualified to receive recognition in the 2019 National Merit Scholarship Program. John took the 2017 preliminary SAT, that stands for PSAT, in the National Merit Scholarship qualifying test last October, so a year ago. And during that time, you know, all grade 10 and 11 students take this test at the high school. Rockland, the town of Rockland is generous enough, lets the students take it for free, which is unique, and it's something that the high school is very appreciative of. And John's strong performance qualified him to enter the 2019 National Merit Scholarship Program. This is a huge accomplishment because he's one of, one of 50,000 of the highest-scoring participants. And you may say, well, that's one of 50,000. Well, there's 1.6 million test takers. What that means is he's in the top 3 percent. So he beat 97 percent of the test takers. That's a really proud accomplishment, John, so congratulations on that as well. Oh, wait a minute. We have another certificate. There it is. Congratulations.
Dr. Harrison, can we have the whole group come back up?
Yeah. Sure.
I think we need to recognize all of them and get a picture of all of you guys together. I know Mr. Mills has a question or fifty for you two.
I have one question. Anybody here take the AP Computer Science Principles?
Anybody taking it now?
Anybody taking it now? Oh, that's interesting. Okay. How do you, what do you, do you have, did you get a performance test yet?
We haven't done it yet. We'll learn how to practice once.
Okay. And the explore, what do you think you might do for explore?
I don't know. I'm not really sure yet. We have a couple ideas I might, we're still talking with my teacher about it to try to figure out a concrete example.
The reason why I'm curious, I teach that in my school. I teach the AP Computer Science.
Yeah, I love it so far.
Yeah, it's a really good course. Which curriculum are you using, syllabus?
CS-50 from Harvard.
Okay. Oh, that's a good one. Yeah, very good. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just get you folks together, please?
Sure.
Let's get in the front here. You may fill line up in the corner. A little more to your left, please.
Stay right in front of the doctor.
Hey, there, not yet, not yet. Mrs. Rogers, do you have any comments or questions? Guys, stay up there for just one more minute.
I do, I do. I just have one more thing to say.
Congratulations. You know, Dr. Harrison said that your accomplishments are remarkable, and they absolutely are. But you guys are gifted, and I admire you. And, you know, the work that you've put in, you know, I worked my tail off in school, but I wasn't able to accomplish what you guys have. You're gifted. It's very, it really is remarkable. And I think what it also shows, I hope it shows the folks in the room and shows the folks here in Rockland, that here at Rockland High School, gifted people like these individuals can succeed and even be challenged. I'm so happy for you. I'm so proud for all of you. I'm so happy for all your parents. I hope your parents are very proud of you. This committee is proud of you, and we applaud you. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
All right. And you guys don't feel free, feel free, you don't have to stick around all night. I know you've got tests to study for and all that good stuff, so thanks again. Congratulations. Next up, item four on tonight's agenda, we have our superintendent's report. Dr. Cron.
Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you to Rockland Cares, the Rockland Police Department, and the Brockton Area Prevention Center for conducting hidden in plain sight at the middle school last week, but also just for being involved with our schools in opioid prevention activities. I'd also like to announce that the Rockland Public Schools have submitted to the Department of Education our official end-of-year report, and I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add to that?
I think it's a rite of passage for business administrators to complete their first one, but I'd just like to thank everyone involved in helping me complete it. Our staff in the office did just a fabulous job stepping up and helping me walk through it, and our interim town accountant at Town Hall was extremely helpful as well in going through it. So it's shifting more to more individual, school-based reporting than overall district reporting, and you're going to see a new report card come out from DESI over the course of this year. It's going to be at a very high level in December, and then in March it'll be a very specific school one, and there'll be a lot of adjustments made, and what they're trying to do is to get all districts to be reporting like tomatoes to tomatoes and apples to apples. So it'll be a two-to-three-year process probably before the data that they're all collecting is going to be really solid data for us to be able to compare ourselves to other districts. But it was an outstanding exercise to do, and I thank everyone for the help with it.
I think we owe you a right, that's what you owe us.
No. No, it's just, it's a lot of paper. For a paperless report, it was a lot of paper.
Very good, very good. Well, congratulations on the completion. On your rite of passage. And it's from our seats, I'll tell you, it's really good to see the business department and the business operations of the schools going so well and doing such a great job. So thanks for all you're doing.
Thank you.
And the entire staff, they're doing a great job over there.
Phenomenal staff.
Absolutely. Thank you. Dr. Cron.
All set.
All set? Great. Well, thank you, Dr. Cron.
Thank you.
Next up on tonight's agenda, we have monthly reports for the month of November. We'll be entertaining four motions for four reports. First for administrators, guidance, nurses, and pupil personnel services.
Four motions.
Four seconds.
All those in favor, that is a vote. Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I do think I will, yes, thank you. Next up are the monthly reports for December, and we'll be entertaining five motions for five newsletters. We have the Eston-Jefferson Memorial Park Middle School, I'm sorry, we don't need motions for these. These are FYI. These are all the good stuff that we're reading about. As we always say, all very colorful, and it was pointed out to be by Mrs. Smith that these are emailed all out, so for the folks that get these, parents at home, make sure you're checking your email and reading these reports because they are so informative and really great stuff happening in our schools every single day. So great job on everybody with the reports as usual. And next up, also for your information on tonight's agenda, we have our building rentals for the month of November, which our buildings continue to stay busy, and they're always available for use. And reach out to Mrs. Penny in the business office, she takes care of that. It's always great to see our buildings, our towns buildings, being used and utilized. Next up, our favorite item on any agenda in any school committee meeting is Curriculum Corner. And tonight, we have the Rockland High School Pathways Program here with us with Ms. Joanne White. And Dr. Harrison, welcome.
Thank you very much. I'll just spend a moment introducing Ms. White and the students in Pathways. I'll let her introduce her team, but I just want to take a moment, and when we think about who to highlight each year for the Curriculum Corner, one of the things we try to think about is impact. And this year, when we gave it a lot of thought, the administration and department heads, we came up with the Pathways Program because we feel they are making an enormous impact in our community as we try to make our school each year more inclusive, and they've really just gotten involved in everything. And I won't say too much because they're going to share all the great things they do for our school, but to just give Ms. White and her team, Ms. White, Ms. Rhino, Ms. Mahoney, and Ms. Collins, who work in the Pathways Program, they do an outstanding job. So from start to finish, they connect, motivate, and they teach the kids, and it's a great group. So, Ms. White, I'll hand it off to you.
Thank you, Principal Harrison. I am Ms. White, for those of you that don't know, and I am the teacher in the Pathways Program. And when he asked if I would like to present, I was really excited just to be able to brag about all of the hard work that the students in the classroom do, as well as the mentors that we have tonight that will also be presenting. So our Pathways family, we have between six to 12 students at a time within our classroom. We have students on, with autism, intellectual impairments, cognitive impairments, neurological impairments. We have a student that uses an iPad as a speaking device. We have speech therapy. We have an occupational consult that comes, physical therapy, a behavior specialist, and then a few of our students, once they have officially graduated, completed their 12th grade year, then they can go on to the CBV program through North River. We have two paraprofessionals, Diane Mahoney, who's here with us tonight, and Paula Rhino, and then a new member, one-to-one aide, Stephanie Collins, as well. So our typical day, which is not ever usually typical, we always start with a morning meeting, and then we go, which includes talking about our day, what day is it in the cycle, what class is dropped, what our day will look like. A lot of times, we have a silly schedule that involves a shorter schedule, or if there's a fire drill and things like that. We'll do art there in the morning, and then I've recently tried to start a girls' group for some of the new freshmen that are in our class, in which we discuss anything from hair and makeup to frenemies to anything at all that they want to talk about, really, but it's just for the girls. We also have a reading class, which is more a vocational reading class that we started this year, math, computers luncheon, adaptive physical education, a social skills, science, and vocational class. So aside from those just being on our schedule, some of the other things that we do within our class are frequent trips to Rockland Federal Credit Union to talk about deposits and withdrawals. We do walking field trips to McDonald's, in which they make sure that they have enough money to buy what they want to buy. We've done a trip to Butterfields, where they have to include tax and tip, as well as work on those social skills. Ocean State Job Lot, De'Anz, we took the Bat Bus to De'Anz, which was a lot of fun. We just went to the post office today, actually, and then we do frequent Dunkin' Donuts quite a bit. But again, all of this is social skills, practicing budgeting, making sure you have enough, getting change. We also have a couple therapy dogs that will come. One is Zoe, which is Ms. LaShudo's, our speech therapist dog, and then another teacher, Ms. Hoffman, has Callie, who's also a trained therapy dog. We've done co-teaching lessons with other teachers, Ms. Hoffman in the math department, as well as Ms. Lanigan in the history department. We've also had previous art teachers come and do some lessons with us. We've had a grocery bagging lesson, science lessons with other science teachers within the Rockland High School Science Department. And then our favorite was when Mr. Tui came and taught us all about cupcake decorating because we got to take a bunch home. So these are just a few photos. We have Dylan with Zoe, our class of Zoe, some students from our Dunkin' Donuts trip, and then working with Mr. Tui. Every Thursday, we have what's called the Pathways Grill, and this is basically our Rockland High School restaurant. We put out menus every week, which, just for teachers, and their teacher mailboxes, and they're able to order a soup, salad, BLT sandwiches, chicken salad sandwiches, tuna sandwiches, and a cupcake. And the soup varies each week. Our popular ones are buffalo chicken, chicken pot pie, lasagna soup. On top of that, we also have to prep for the school store, the Dog Depot, which we have every Friday. So we make cupcakes, pretzel bites, brownies for that as well on Thursday. On Wednesdays, we go shopping, in which Ms. Mahoney and Ms. Rhino will put together a list of what we need, and then I will divvy it up by name, picture, and amount for each student. Some of our students are able to shop independently, which is wonderful. Other ones will need a teacher support, so they just kind of rotate throughout the week. The day of the grill will then deliver to the teachers during all three lunches, or they can walk in. And we always have a money man, but they work on chopping, baking, bagging, proportioning out foods, delivering, customer service, we wash all of the dishes, and then, of course, making change. Here, I have just a few pictures, but then I was going to invite Alex Anzavino, who is definitely a leader in the grill, to come and share, to talk about what you do with your help. Introduce yourself.
Man, hello, there's a, my name is Alex Anzavino, and I would like to talk about the Pathways Grill. Let's see, let's see, um, let's, um...
When you get down there, what do you have to put on?
I have to put on an apron, there's a hairnet, wash your hands, and put gloves on. Let's see, um, then we have to, let's see, um, there's, um...
What is, what's the, Alex this year has taken over one of the desserts completely independently, and so he is basically another teacher in the room, so what do you work on, Al?
I work on, let's see, um, I do, I do the mail with, there's a Ms. Ellis, and that's I deliver.
In the grill, what do you do? You make the cupcakes?
Oh, I make the cupcakes, and I help him, and I do to make the soup. Let's, let's see, um, let's see, um...
Who's our money man?
Nice.
You put the frosting on the cupcakes, too?
Yes.
All right, that's what I like.
Alex goes through, I'm going to brag about you right now, Al, all right?
All right.
Alex does our, does the cupcakes, and we do three boxes full of cupcakes. So we let him choose, you can either do chocolate or vanilla, and Al definitely has to do an apron change halfway through because somehow, I don't know how, Al, but you get it all over yourself.
That's why we have the apron.
Keep it all over my apron.
Alex, I have that same problem all the time. But I got to tell you, I can see those cupcakes in that picture, and those look delicious. I can see you did a great job with those.
What do you say?
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
And he's also one of our go-to money man because he does a great job giving change, which isn't always the easiest. But he is definitely one of the hardest workers we have in there.
Good job.
What's your favorite, chocolate or vanilla?
Let's see, um, chocolate.
Oh, you're a man after my own heart.
You would, you would put other type of toppings on it, like cherries or anything like that, sprinkles?
Let's see, um, well, there is rainbow sprinkles, there's a root pepper on top of the cupcakes.
Good.
And we also actually brought a little treat that we made for, that we sometimes sell in our Dog Depot, which I'm about to get to, but Al, why don't you hand those out? A little munch holiday treat.
All right.
So the next thing that kind of rolls from the grill is the Dog Depot that we started last year, and it's every Friday during all three lunches. We sell cupcakes, brownies, pretzel bites. Sometimes we do ice cream brownie sundaes, and then a munch or a puppy chow, that's all nut-free. We have students from our adaptive physical education class that will come and help serve, but the students work on customer service, being flexible in the schedule, meaning that they don't always get to go to computers luncheon gym that day, they have to work. They get to interact with a lot of peers that they don't always see. Money skills, we do, they fill out time sheets at the end, and then they'll get a pay stub to see the payout of working. So here we have a few pictures, Alex and one of our former students, Michael, in the Dog Depot. We do have foam fingers and wigs, but those weren't, weren't popular, just the food.
Yep, that's me.
That was Tony. So one of our classes is the adaptive physical education class that Ms. Folsom teaches, and it's a combination of students in the Pathways as well as other students in general education classes. And they work together throughout games, working on team-building exercises, they practice for the unified sports that might be coming up, they host, or work all together, but we have a field day at the end of the year, which is a lot of fun. And then it's also an opportunity for them to work on social skills that we talk about and work on in class with some peers that's more of a safe environment than strangers within the school. And then they also have a friendly face that they see in the hallway. And so I was going to call up Emily Hunt Grandma, as well as Ashley Murphy and Amelia to come talk about our PE class. Say hi.
Hi.
What's your name?
I'm nervous.
Don't have to be nervous.
It's really good to see you. We're really happy you're here with us tonight.
Absolutely.
I'm Emily.
Hi, Emily.
I'm Ray Dunst. Well, I know these two, and...
What do we do together in school?
We play kickball. I always hit Honi with a kickball.
It's an accident, right?
Yeah, I didn't mean to. I was kicking it straight and it hit Honi.
You can't help it, you're such a good kickball player, right?
I'm a silver kicker.
Good job.
Then we always play soccer or basketball, or hockey.
It gets very competitive, doesn't it?
Yeah, and there's a lot of games going on, so, yeah.
That sounds great. It sounds like you really like it a lot, huh?
Yeah, I do.
Is that your best class of the day?
Yeah, because I know these two girls.
They're pretty cool girls.
Yeah, they are.
They are.
They are.
All right, good job.
And they're awesome.
They are. They're awesome, man.
Thanks.
Do you look forward to it every day? Is that your favorite?
Well, yeah.
Yeah. Great.
I was trying, it has all the pitches, and then it has field day, we always have field days every day, Friday, and I always get Cassa wet.
So tell me, what's in those buckets that you have there?
Oh, they're full of water.
They're full of water?
The squirt gun.
Yeah, the squirt guns.
Oh, man.
You take your turns, line up, and you take your turn.
That looks like fun.
Fill them up, and I get Cassa wet.
Cassa always comes for the water fight, yeah.
And I got him so good. Then I was trying to get basketball, I just got, and then I always play basketball every time when there's a lot of games going on, I just grab a basketball and...
Good job. We have our recreational Mondays usually, right?
Monday.
A choice of a game that we like to play.
Yeah.
Your favorite's basketball, huh?
Yeah. I love basketball so much, and, yeah.
Good job, Al. Amelia, you going to add anything about our AP class?
So I came here last year from Sells Church Charter Public School, and when I came here, I wasn't expecting the school to have such a strong foundation for their special needs students, and so when I found out that they had a PE class that let the kids interact with, you know, other high school students and have like a special face, like they can see in the hall and stuff, it really hit home because I have a best friend who has special needs, and he doesn't really get to have like these interactions and stuff like they do at the school. And so it like, it really made me very happy to see this.
It gives us an opportunity every day to work with these kids, and we build bonds and relationships, and you see them in the hallways, and you say, what's up? And it's just, it's just like, it's the best part of everyone's day. It brightens everyone's day. It puts a smile on everyone's face.
Like these two.
Yeah.
Well, I'll tell you what, you all have put a smile on our face. You know the group that was here before you?
I know these two, too.
The group that was here before you, I said to them, I was really proud of them, and I also told them I admire them, and you know what, I admire you two, and Al and Dylan, you guys are pretty amazing guys. Great job. Keep up the good work.
All right, nice job.
Excellent. Good job.
Good job.
Good job, thank you. So a new program that started this year, that kind of goes along with the AP's style, is we started a very own Bulldog Buddies program, myself and Ms. Hoffman in the math department, in which students in the Pathways create friendships, they build self-esteem with other general ed students they had to apply, and then we paired them up together. So every month, we do an activity, however, they also have the opportunity to reach out to each other, non-supervised, with parent permission, of course, and engage, really, and create a friendship. So in October, we went, did candle pin bowling. November, we did a paint night here, which was a lot of fun, and we had a surprise artist, Mr. Cassa. And then we have a movie night coming up this week, so I wanted to invite Tony DiNino and his buddy Tyler, and Dylan Doyle and his buddy Carolina come on up and talk about it.
Wow. That is awesome.
Are you going to introduce yourself?
That's it.
Just introduce yourself. Introduce yourself.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Anthony DiNino, and...
You're part of the Bulldog Buddies Program?
I'm part of the Bulldog Buddies Program.
And what have you done so far?
What have I done so far?
In the program.
In the program? In the program? We had some painting in our second event.
And what'd you paint?
It's a snowman.
Did it say anything next to the snowman?
Let it snow. My Bulldog Buddy is definitely Tyler Beatrice.
Do you like having a buddy, Tony?
Uh, yep. Well, you know, we always have events every month.
Do, what, when we announced one of the top dogs a few weeks ago, who was it?
It was Sean Morrissey.
This past week, or the week before was?
Who was number eight?
Tyler Beatrice, my Bulldog Buddy.
And you were so excited.
Oh, thanks.
Tyler, do you wanna talk about the program, all about why you joined?
Okay, that's all I'm saying.
You did great.
Good job, thank you.
So I'm Tyler, I'm a senior. When I found out there was Bulldog Buddies, me and Ms. White, we've known each other for four years through student council. And I have Ms. Hoffman for my statistics class. So they both influenced me to join the program, they said Tony would need somebody. We think he'd be a great fit, so I applied, we got matched up. He, we have done the bowling, we went to paint night. Sadly, he painted a snowman better than me. And last week, he came to the play since I was in it, and... He supported me, yeah, we see each other through the halls. When I walked by, a few weeks ago, I dropped by, we played some bingo. And we're gonna go see Elf next week.
Did you give it away?
No, it's this week.
Thank God you have Tony, you're helping. Alright, Dylan and Caroline, you guys wanna talk about?
Alright.
Yes.
My name is... This is...
This is Dylan.
Hi Dylan. It's good to see you again, Dylan. How are you?
Hi.
Last time I saw you, Dylan, we were at the North Pole, I saw you with Santa at the North Pole, remember?
Uh-oh.
At the Christmas scroll.
I'm Caroline, Dylan's buddy, and I go see Dylan every day, and it's the best part of my day. I love hanging out with him and the rest of the kids in Ms. White's class. And we do recycling, right? Yeah? At bowling, Dylan absolutely killed me, he was so good. You beat me in bowling?
Was it fun?
So I just love being a part of this program. The best thing.
What an amazing program, because I think it really shows real true friendships being built. And I don't want to assume, but I would bet guys that you guys do a lot of learning from each other, right?
Definitely, well, it's great, because like Caroline said, she comes in almost every G block when she's able to. And not only works with Dylan, but then she knows all the other kids in the class as well. And same when Tyler was able to come in and play bingo, everybody knows each other. So it's a very inclusive and welcoming atmosphere that all of these guys have created, so it's been great. A lot of dancing.
Candlepin? No? What kind of ball, what kind of bowling?
No.
The small ones, right?
And who did you paint? What did you paint? Olaf. And then who are we watching, what movie?
Buddy.
Buddy, the Elf, yeah. Our social skills, I still need some more.
Good job, guys.
Great job, everybody, great job. Merry Christmas.
We have our unified sports that Mr. Graziano has really helped us out with. We've done unified soccer multiple times with Abington and Carver. Unified basketball, unified kickball, and then the last two years, we actually hosted the Special Olympics bocce, unified bocce, which was amazing. And the first year, Alex actually held, got to carry the torch, and then this past year, Tony got to carry the torch. And it was a lot of fun, and then up there is from one of our first ever unified kickball game. Other things that we are involved in is we started a pathways page last year in the Veritas. So Emily, if you wanna hand out, this is just the past newspaper. But we have our own pathways page, and the students get to write about whatever they choose. So it's a nice outlet for them, especially if sometimes they kind of get stuck on an idea, or a craft, or something that they've heard or seen. This is a great way for them to be able to write about it. We do school recycling, like Caroline and Dylan said, every day at the end of the day, Dylan and a few other students go around collecting the recycling. We started a Rockland High School copy center down in the Fishbowl, in which teachers are able to fill out a form, put in a request, and then either we deliver their copies or put them in their mailboxes. Alex is our only mail distributor that we have. He works with Ms. Ellis by putting all the different pieces of mail in the mailboxes, and he knows exactly what role each teacher plays. So when something's addressed to student government, or he knows which mailbox that is, and doesn't have to know the teacher name. We, he's also our main go-to guy when filling up the Gatorade machine with Principal Harrison. He does a great job. And then Dylan, Alex, and a few other students work with Ed Loughlin in the cafeteria every day. Putting away trash, cleaning tables, putting them up, stacking chairs. And Ed has been wonderful in allowing us to help him out every day. So, the Gatorade machine is empty here, but that's that, and then Dylan doing his recycling. And then, one of the big things that we try to incorporate within our curriculum is the idea of giving back and helping your community. So every year, we make sure to, we make a lesson out of it. For example, we just went to Ocean State and looked at budgeting, getting different items for the VA hospital stockings for the vets. So we had to stay within our $25 budget, and then we could work it out on the papers, and then we donated that. We always donate our funds from the cupcakes to the breast cancer fundraiser in September. When we had Hurricane Harvey and Irene, we donated all of our funds from the grill to that. I believe it was National Honor Society that was in charge of collecting the money for that. One of our previous students decided to do a mission trip with his family to Peru, so we donated to that as well, and had them come in and share all about their adventure that they were gonna go on. We sold camo Rockland shirts for the Rockland Canine Unit. And then they came in with Tito, and I forget the other dog's name, but they did a whole demonstration for us, which was a lot of fun. We spread awareness about diabetes and gave special little information slips with oatmeal to all of the teachers. We always baked goods for the unified bocce and the drama shows. We take the holiday ornaments that are down on the nurses, and we'll go to Target and get a few items there. And then we also fundraise for the Bulldog Buddies. So, helping our community is one of the biggest things that we work on within our class. And that's pretty much it. We are a busy crew. Special thank yous go out to Mr. Harrison and Mrs. McGonigal for kind of allowing us to create our own curriculum and being so flexible with what we choose to do. Ms. Folsom for helping and teaching our AP class. Ms. Ellis is definitely one of our go-tos down in the office that I feel comfortable sending any of these guys independently down to, that she knows how to help and what they need. Ed, of course, for helping us all the time. The art department is great, when I get art supplies, it would always run out, just because it's not my forte. Mr. Graziano, and then Ms. Lanancotton for allowing us to be a part of the Veritas. And that's it.
Excellent job.
Thank you, really very much. Again, we talked about how Curriculum Corner, we look forward to it so much, and we do, because it lets us see the great things that are happening in our schools for all of our students. What this program does for inclusivity here is just amazing. It's amazing for the students that participate in the program, it's amazing for the students that are the Bulldog Buddies. It's really just great, I mean, I'm so impressed. Dylan, Alex, Em, great job, guys, Tony, great job. You guys made us smile tonight, thank you so much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, thank you for all your hard work in the school, everything else, keep it up. It's good for you.
Thank you guys very much.
And thank you for our treats, I can't wait to try these, these look great. Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alex, thanks, guys.
I'll come, I'll come for lunch one day. I will, I will.
Sounds great, sounds great. Thanks again, and Merry Christmas to all of you. Alright, next up on our agenda, almost as exciting, but not quite. We have some completed fundraisers, some very, very successful ones. The Memorial Park PAC ran four fundraisers. They ran a Name That Circle fundraiser that raised $225. They ran a Turkey Feathers fundraiser that raised $904.50. They ran some raffles that raised $486. And they ran a toy box holiday shopping fundraiser that raised $95. The Jefferson School PAC ran three fundraisers. They had a book bingo that raised $153. They had a Halloween dance that raised $572.29. And last but absolutely not least, they had a Fun Run Booster-Thon that raised a whopping $12,988.94. So not only was that an incredibly financially successful event, but I'm sure we tired out some kids for their parents during the day, before they got home. Success all around, that's great, great news. Good to see all the great fundraising, great work being done by our school communities to raise money for our kids. Seeing nothing under new business, we will move on to our final agenda item of the evening, which is public service announcements. As always, ladies first, Ms. Jasmine Morse, our student representative.
First of all, I just wanna say congratulations to all the AP Scholar students. It's an impressive achievement, and they should be really proud of themselves. And also, I just wanna acknowledge the Pathways Program. I love my afternoons going in and visiting them and saying hi, and seeing all the friendly faces. And definitely one of my favorite parts of the Veritas is seeing their page, they always do a great job. And Fridays, can't help but go and get a cupcake. I highly recommend that you all, at some point, come by and grab one. And also, happy holidays.
Thank you, Jasmine, thank you very much. Mrs. Maroni?
Mr. Biggins, I, this past week, last week, Tuesday night, I got to watch our very own, God bless you, Dr. Karan present at the Board of Selectmen meeting. And it was nice for me to be able to sit and be proud of you, listening to all of the school's accomplishments, along with yours on the MCAS. So I thought it was cool for me to see another perspective of you on that side of the wall. I also got to attend the Jefferson PAC meeting on Wednesday night. And I believe that they didn't meet their goal, even though they made $13,000. They wanted $15,000 or $14,000, and so now Mrs. Scheifli has challenged them to read, I believe, a thousand more minutes, and then she'll be duct taped to the wall. So, they didn't, because they didn't meet their goal, but they didn't wanna leave them not achieving their goal, so she gave them another opportunity. So, there will be a chair under her, but I believe the duct tape will do, as usual, its job and hold her up. They also have a fourth grade, the fourth grader started a book club. It'll be Tuesday nights once a month. They have a culture night coming, January 24th, from 6th to 7th. And their holiday boutique is December 19th and 20th. It was interesting for me, being an MP mom, to cross over to see Jefferson. I know Nicole O'Brien, I know Mrs. Scheifli, but it was still sort of fascinating, I think, to sort of see someone else do all the work, obviously, that it takes to be a PAC mom. So, that was good for me. And I also wanted to say happy holidays and enjoy your vacation week off from school.
Well, Mr. Biggins mentioned that Curriculum Corner is a favorite part, and this was extremely good tonight. They, that group of kids is super, they're doing a super job. And it was the model of luck in the world, in the future, too. And Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mills. Not a whole lot for me tonight, real, kinda short, but one thing I did this morning is my wife asked me a favor to drop off some presents. She's been volunteering this year for the first year with Holiday Magic, and I know, Mrs. Maroni, you did that as well. And I just wanna remark what an amazing, amazing program that is. I know Mr. Phelps's wife was integral in its creation and it's continuing on. Mrs. Janet Cann's doing an amazing job for all our kids here in town. I happen to drop off the gifts at the McKinley School, and I couldn't believe the amount of stuff that's there. I just couldn't believe it, I mean, there was volunteers there working, putting stuff aside, but Rockland people are good, man, I'm telling you. I mean, people come out for each other, and all the gifts, I mean, bikes, dozens and dozens and dozens of bikes lined up. It was really, it kind of gave you goosebumps and heartwarming, that reminds you what the season's all about, and reminds you what a special place this town is. So I just wanted to mention Janet, and Janet Cann, and the Holiday Magic, just one of the many things that makes Rockland a special place. And while I brought up Mr. Phelps, as you noticed, he's not here with us tonight here. Mr. Garofalo had a previous commitment, and Mr. Phelps has some continuing health issues that he's battling. And we had good news tonight, that it seems as though he's kind of gotten that under control, and it looks like good health is in the future, but I just wanted to remark real quick how much we miss him. He's a pretty special guy, he's a pretty special friend. I admire him greatly, too, he's been a great colleague here, this committee is very lucky to have him. And we're very, very pleased that he's gonna be coming back to us healthy. So, I said that tonight when he's not here, because I know what colors of red he'd blush at if I said it while he was here. But we'll miss you very much, Mr. Phelps, and we're looking forward to having you back here with us. With that, that's all I got, I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday season, and a safe one, and we'll look forward to seeing you in 2019. And with that, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's a vote, thank you very much, Merry Christmas, have a good night.